Welcome, everyone. Thank you very much. If you'll take your seats. And I would like to welcome everyone to the City of Pembroke Pines City Commission Meeting for February 5th, 2025. I know they're all excited. Look, look at all the football players. Wow. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good.
I am here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Right.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Bonilla.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite all of you in a second to stand for the National Anthem and also for the Pledge of Allegiance. Estefia Gonzalez, who's 16 years old and sings with the Rising Star, she is a student at Cypress Bay High School, and she has the honors today, Estefania. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow. Wow, thank you so much. Estefania Gonzalez. What a rising star she is. Thank you so very, very much. That was beautiful. Announcements to be pulled from the agenda?
Item number 18 has been pulled by administration.
Item number 18, that's noted. Presentations. I will come around. I have several presentations today. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I am told that I'm the first mayor in the city's history to make this presentation. And I don't know why it's taken this long, but I guarantee you, not a year will go by again without this presentation being done. This is a proclamation of the City of Pembroke Pines declaring Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the rich heritage, achievements, and contributions of African Americans to our city, our state, and our nation. And whereas the observance of Black History Month traced back to 1926, when historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week, which later expanded into a month-long celebration in 1976 to ensure the significant impact of black Americans is acknowledged and honored. And whereas African Americans have played a crucial role in shaping the cultural, economic, political, and social fabric of our city, and have made lasting contributions in the fields such as education, medicine, science, business, the arts, civil rights, and others. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines stands committed to promoting diversity, inclusion, and justice, ensuring that the stories and legacies of African Americans are acknowledged and celebrated throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Pembroke Pines, and encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue to make our community inclusive for all. Now, today I have asked one of our principals, Sean Chance, and I believe he's got Malachi, who is the student body chair, president, to come forward so that they can proudly show this at their school. Mr. Chance, you want to say a few words?
I didn't know this was the first time it's done, and I want to thank you so much for recognizing Black History Month and the impact that African community, African American community and the blacks have had only in the City of Pines across this country. So thank you very much for recognizing that.
Thank you.
And I also want to say that it's so, I'm so proud to have Malachi, our class president, with me here so that he can see this special moment, and maybe one day he's doing some great things that we get a chance to see his impact. He already has had an impact on our school, and I look forward to his greater impact in the future.
Malachi? Let me ask you. So, so how old are you?
I'm 14 years old.
You're 14?
I'm 14.
What does Black History Month mean to you?
It's a month to be able to celebrate my culture, for one. And two, also a month where I could, yes, have fun with my friends and have fun in school, where I could be with my principal, Mr. Chance, who's a great teacher and principal, by the way, and just have fun and live.
Malachi, I think you're going to be mayor one day. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. And happy Black History Month. This is a procl- oh, this one has... This one has smaller prints, so you're gonna have to... Excuse me. Okay. This is a proclamation of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, declaring International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas January 27th marks International Holocaust Remembrance Day designated by the United Nations General Assembly to commemorate the anniversary of liberation of Auschwitz and Birkenau, the largest Nazi concentration and extermination camp. And whereas January 27th, 2025, marks 80 years since the liberation. And whereas today and every day, we remember and honor the memory of the 6 million Jews who were systematically murdered by Adolf Hitler and the Nazis, along with millions of other innocent victims, including people with disabilities, political dissidents, and others targeted for prosecution, persecution. And whereas antisemitism has, has been defined by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance as a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred toward Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. And whereas International Holocaust Remembrance Day serves as a solemn reminder of dangers of hatred, bigotry, and antisemitism, and underscores the importance of education, vigilance, and action to prevent such atrocities from ever occurring again. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines reaffirms its commitment to promoting tolerance, understanding, and human dignity, while standing against all forms of hatred and discrimination. And whereas it is our duty to ensure that the lessons of the Holocaust remain the cornerstone of our collective memory, and to honor the resilience and courage of all those who survived and rebuilt their lives. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, do hereby proclaim January 27th, 2025, as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the City of Pembroke Pines, and call upon all residents to join in solemn remembrance of the victims, educate themselves about the Holocaust, and commit to building a more tolerant and compassionate society. With us today to receive this award is our darling friend, Sophie Bach, who just celebrated her 100th birthday.
I have to get up. Okay, are we taking a picture?
We're gonna take a picture.
I'm gonna take a picture. I love this.
Right over here.
Okay. Let me hold your hand.
You're gonna hold my hand, but no, no jumping jacks.
Okay.
Okay. You get to hold this, and I get to hold you. And now we're gonna take a picture. Ladies and gentlemen, Sophie Bach. Where are you gonna put it?
The Jewish Center.
You're gonna bring it to the Jewish?
I'm going to bring it to the Jewish Center and have them hang it.
Sophie, how old were you when the, when, when the war started and you first heard about people going to camps and such, such things?
Well, let's say I was about 19.
And what?
Well, they, it was a little earlier, but I wasn't really aware. We didn't know until we had to bring people from Germany. And my father was fortunate, he was able to bring his brother and one child. And I just remember every Sunday in New York, there was a building hiatus. And the hiatus, we were there every week, trying to push this through. So we were lucky that family, that some of the family, we were able to get out.
Sophie, we have some beautiful young people here, right over here. And they're, and they're listening to what you're saying. If you wanted to say one thing about the Holocaust that they should remember throughout their whole lives, what would it be?
Never again. Never again. It was devastating when we found out what was happening. And I just cannot understand people trying to say, it never happened. We have survivors. We have people with numbers on their hands. There's still, there are still some alive. I'm sorry that I couldn't get anyone here today.
I understand.
But we do have in Pembroke Pines survivors. And their stories, I've heard so many, and I can cry. We were lucky. We were here.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Now we have a little change of mood. This is a certificate of recognition to the CW West Pembroke Pines Panthers. The City of Pembroke Pines proudly recognizes the players and coaches of the CW West Pines Panthers Football Team for outstanding achievement in winning the American Youth Football League Super Bowl on Saturday, November 16th, 2024. There they are. Because I'm telling you, the kids in Pembroke Pines can do anything. And your hard work, determination, and teamwork have made this an incredible memory and memorial, memorable season. So we have Quinn Spencer, Maurice Codner, Tyler Tyson McLean, Mackay Bird, Noah Nelson, Michael Wright, Antoine Owens, Kason Williams, Jabari Johnson, Zion Colburn, Braxton Lopez, Charles Bowie, Joshua Hall, Aiden Palmer, Khalif Burke, Reginald Alkidor? Alkidor? Huh? Alador. Ahmad Jax, Jax. And the coaching staff is Maurice Codner, Matari Bodie, Arthur Braithwaite, Michael Wells, Dwayne Boils is a coach, Wayne Ruby, Shimari Elliott, Reggie Alduar, Marquee Knott, and, and Michael Wright. And those are the assistant coaches. And as mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the City Commission, I extend a heartfelt, heartfelt congratulations on your success, and express our gratitude for the positive recognition and exemplary sportsmanship you have brought to our community. So if you could all come up, we're gonna take a picture, and somebody's gonna hold this plaque, which weighs about eight pounds. And... Can you stand right here?
Go back.
Okay. And I have a bunch of, and I have a bunch of certificates, which were signed. Who's gonna take these? You'll take them? Okay, so. Our photographer is gonna organize us. And I'm gonna stand back here. Who wants to get the plaque to go in the middle? All right, ready? One, two, three. You good? You got one here? All right. I think that's it. Belmonte? Oh! And you have what? As soon as after Belmonte, do the video. I wasn't told about the video signing. Okay. Mr. Stam?
Thank you, mayor. This month, I'd like to bring up our winners of the Natalie Belmonte Great Yards Award for District One, Lloyd and Jean Ransom. Go ahead, stand next to them. So mayor, um...
How are you? See you. How are you? Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
He's gonna read that. Thank you so much.
So mayor, as Gabe brings up my slides on the screen, the Ransom family house is just absolutely beautiful. It's coming up right now. Let's you peek right here real quick, mayor, and it's gonna come up in a second, but... Can you pull it over, Gabe? Or we go that way, that's fine. There we go. All right, scroll down to the third slide for me, Gabe, and there it is.
It's an oasis.
So mayor, you know, when you look at a house like this, it's, it's just pretty incredible, and, and we're really just proud of this home. And again, this is one of the standards that we set in our community. So again, we're really proud to recognize this family today and what they've done with their home.
I have to tell you, that's spectacular. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. So what is your, so what is your, what is your secret?
Well, my wife is a secret.
Well, let me talk to her. What, what, what is your secret?
It's hard work out in the garden from like nine in the morning to six, seven in the evening.
You do it yourself?
I did myself, yes.
Yes.
I take out the trash, but she does all the...
She carries all the haystacks, too?
Sometimes I do.
He takes out the trash, though. And, and, and what, what got you into gardening?
Well, we're originally from Guyana in South America, and we grew up with a lot of flowers around us, and it stayed with us. And I just love gardening, and my husband loves flowers.
Well, you did a wonderful, wonderful job, and we have this certificate for you, and also a $50 gift certificate at, at Home Depot.
He can't buy a tools with him.
But, but, but he can buy garbage bags with him. And so, and so, so you'll have, you'll have a lot of fun. Let's take a picture together, and congratulations on your beautiful, beautiful home. And our, and our code enforcement officers here, this whole program is a, is a, is a, is a joint effort with the Code Enforcement Division of the city, and they're very, very proud of it. So let's all take a picture.
And actually, Natalie Belmonte is from Guyana.
Yes, she was. Okay. We good? Congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor will be back in next month with District Two. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. We're gonna show the video? There is a, there is a video that, that we prepared in honor of Holocaust Memorial Day, and we're gonna show that now.
The Holocaust is one of the blackest marks on the history of humanity. It is unbelievable. It is a terrible time, and it is a miracle that some of us, very few, survived. I was born on May 26, 1938, in Poland, in the city of Lvov. But when I was three years old, the Germans came to Lvov. They invaded our city in 1941, the day my youngest sister was born.
My name is Isaac Kreizer. I'm born in Poland, in the city of Gostini, in 1925, 22nd of May. I have an obligation, I promise, to tell this story, but from people that they knew they're going to die. I escaped, and I keep my word. I am like a messenger. It is very important that from generation to generation, we tell this story, and it will never be forgotten. Because if we don't look into the past, it might repeat itself.
Mayor?
Yes.
My great grand-
Homemade manjaro.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mayor, I am named after my great grandfather, who left the region of southwest Russia just prior to World War I, where Jews faced persecution. During the Second World War, the Nazis grabbed four brothers. Three of them died. The fourth brother, who survived, his grandson is also an individual who won't back down. And that's President Zelensky of Ukraine. My great grandfather's from the region. I had the honor of speaking with Anita, Principal Chance, I believe it was about three years ago. She had come, and we had done the presentation. For those who think that time will make ignorance disappear, you can see it in present-day news. So we in the City of Pembroke Pines respect everyone. And that's what makes our city the city that it is. I'm very proud of it. And for the young folks who are here, they're gonna remember Sophie. And I appreciate you doing that, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rodriguez has asked that we take item 19 out of order, and without objection, Commissioner, you're recognized for item 19.
Thank you, mayor. I'm taking it out of order because we have Dawn Mitchell. Is she here? If you could please come up, and also our city, our assistant city manager, Michael Stam. I guess I'll read it into the record?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, item number one, discussion and possible action for the City of Pembroke Pines Commission to approve a letter of support for the Footprint to Success Clubhouse's local appropriations request through the state legislature. I publicly support the actions and activity of that area as qualified 501(c)(3) organization known as Footprint to Success Clubhouse, located in the City of Pembroke Pines, which provides vitally important professional assistance and services to adults who are citizens and residents of the city dealing with mental health and related issues. The commissioner, myself, formally request that the mayor and the commission, as a collegial body, to adopt a motion for the city to publicly endorse and support the professional efforts and activities of the mental health services of the Footprint to Success Clubhouse in the City of Pembroke Pines. I want to thank Dawn for coming. She is, she works with the Footprints of Success. But as a little bit of a background, I wanted to ask Mr. Stam to give us some background on the facility that they're currently at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mike Stam, assistant city manager, director of planning and economic development. So Footprints of Success is part of the Southwest Hammocks Development. As you all know, Southwest Hammocks was developed in partnership with Carforce Supportive Housing, a non-for-profit organization established in 1993. Their mission is to confront homelessness by developing affordable housing and providing supportive services as a pathway to self-sufficiency. They're guided by a vision where everyone has a safe and decent housing and is very self-reliant. Southwest Hammocks is a 100-unit affordable supportive housing development located on the northwest corner of Pembroke Road and University Drive, and the Howard Foreman Health and Human Services Campus. The three-story complex is comprised of studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, along with 5,000 square feet of onsite supportive services. If you haven't been by the property, it's, it's just a beautiful addition to the health park. It really kind of paints a picture for what our health park can do, and we're just really excited about, you know, this project. For those who don't know, this project took a long time to get underway, and we're just happy that they're opened. The Planning and zoning board actually approved their plan in December 2021, and we issued their certificate of occupancy in July of 2024.
So that's the brief background on, on the facility that they're at. And Dawn, if you can share just a little bit, we're hopefully gonna have a larger presentation with your CEO, Barbara, at a later time. So at this point, just very brief as to what you guys do at the Footprint Clubhouse, and then I can go into what the, the letter actually would mean.
Okay, so Footprint Clubhouse has been in operation for 15 years. We just moved to Pembroke Pines in September of last year. We were originally in Broward, prior to that, Pompano Beach. We're now here. We provide services to adults who have severe and persistent mental health illness. And we provide services, let me provide our employment, resources, opportunity, helping them with job search, mock interviews. We also provide those who want to go back to school, we provide resources to going back to school, or we have the drop-in center. Someone wants to just come there, and it's a day respite center where we provide activities for them throughout the day. But we provide services for those, again, as I said, those who have severe mental illness.
Thank you so much. So obviously, they're doing some great work in Pembroke Pines. I believe they've either invited or will invite some, the rest of the commission to tour their facilities, as well as kind of get to know the program a little bit more. But I had the great opportunity to go see the facility. I toured around, got to meet some of the clubhouse members, and just the great work that they're able to do. What they're looking to do with the Florida legislation is an appropriations request for their test kitchens. So not only are they supporting the day-to-day lives of their members, they also are looking to, to help them get jobs, a lot of jobs. A lot of jobs available to them are in the, in the food service sector. So this test kitchen will allow them to get trained in, in a facility that is similar to what they would eventually go and work at. So it's, it's a great partnership that we have going on in the city of Pembroke Pines. If you haven't already gone to visit, highly encourage and like I said, they will be coming back. But this is a, a simple item for their appropriations request. They asked for, for me to do a letter of support. While I was very happy to provide that letter, I also thought it would be a good opportunity for all of us to endorse that and for us to sign off on a letter as a collective because I'm not allowed to use the city stamp unless you guys all sign up on it. So the letter is an exhibit one and we can obviously edit it. It's a brief overview of what they're doing and what the appropriations request is. So that's what I'm asking for today. This, it's a draft, so any feedback that you guys have, we can implement.
Is that your motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
The motion has been made to send a, a letter that I guess I would sign on behalf of, of the commission?
Yeah, and it would have the letterhead.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
And there's a second from the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion on the item?
I think it's a great program. I think that Health and Human Services has been a great asset to the city and I'm very, very proud of my colleague for having the opportunity to spend time with you all, knowing what your needs are and helping to find a solution to get you where you need to go.
Yes, indeed.
Commissioner Rodriguez, well done.
A great, a great organization and well done, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. That will be signed tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
We have been a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
I beg your pardon?
A ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 28th of February from 10 to 12.
Well, somebody, if somebody, if somebody can, City Clerk, if you could jot that down and we'll make sure that, that we do our best to be there. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you so much, Dawn. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving back to the front of the agenda. Items of the, the request of the public?
No items.
Okay, Commissioner Auditor Report. The Commissioner Auditor is here at our request to talk to us about their audit plan and I want to thank them for coming forward. Your name and title for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Dan O'Keefe. I'm with Forvis Mazars and I am your Commission Auditor, per se. And with me is the rest of the team and I'll introduce you to them. Eddie Casagnetta, who I believe you've all met, Christie Clements, who you're going to meet, and Jamie Amos, which both are from Forvis Mazars. And we just wanted to kind of give you a little introduction to who they are. We'll kind of begin tonight just by giving you a little overview of Forvis Mazars because you've known us in the past as MSL and I just thought it would be a good idea to kind of let you know who this new firm is and what we're all about. We'll give you an overview of kind of where we're at and where we're heading in terms of the audit plan. Eddie will come in and tell you what we think the project should be, but of course, again, you have to decide if that's what you want. And then we're gonna have Christie talk about doing a comprehensive risk assessment. And I think this would be really, really good to do for the city. We did one about seven or eight years ago. They have a different approach, fresh eyes. I think it would be good, but again, this would be your decision to follow through with. Just kind of in general, how we got here. Forvis Mazars is, is really a fairly young firm in a lot of respects. About three, there was two of the largest regional firms in the country merged, it was about three and a half years ago, and formed Forvis. And then last year, they had an alliance with Mazars, which is a firm headquartered in Paris and basically covers the European Union, making it the eighth-largest CPA firm in the world. We were invited to join and we looked at it and said, this is gonna solve a lot of our problems in our firm, especially in areas of consulting, information technology, and international taxation, because our firm was growing outside of the state of Florida into the rest of the country and also we had clients from other countries. So it, it was a really good fit and culturally, it's been a wonderful fit. And I think it's gonna be, really be good for the city and our clients in terms of being able to have a lot more arrows in our quiver, so to speak, where we don't have to go out and hard, hire third parties to do some of this work. We're gonna be able to do 100% of it, you know, within the firm. So we're very excited about that. This is just kind of a, a brief understanding of how, how big this organization is, but it's big, but it doesn't act big. It still is about serving clients. It's still about that, that personal touch, if you will, of, of having somebody that you can pick up the phone and call and they will turn around and give you what you, you're looking for. And we will continue to do that, I guarantee you. So I want Christie just to talk a little bit about the consulting practice, because they do a lot of this type of work all around the country and I just want you to meet her.
Hello. Good evening. So our consulting practice is national in size. We have a national footprint. We have 1,900 professionals that sit in our consulting practice in 28 states and we're really focused on 10 industries. Within that, there are a number of different service lines. There are internal audit, state and local tax, cybersecurity, forensics, et cetera, because we feel like the way the firm has organized us under what's called Risk Advisory Services, we can really tailor a solution by pulling of these 1,900 resources to create a solution that, that our clients need. As far as the internal audit practice, we fall under that umbrella. We have over 80 associates that are focused on internal audit services 365 days a year. That's what they do. They are internal audit practitioners. They're all credentialed. We have enough resources that we can have a deep bench and it's scalable. And we use a data-driven approach. So instead of sampling, like a sample of 30 to test it, we can use our data tools to test an entire population. And that's where you're gonna see a lot of value add to the work that we do. So we're focused on value creation. With that, this is our purpose, mission and vision. You know, we are really focused on helping our clients unlock their full potential to be advisors for them, to help them recognize where there may be a need before they do. That's where we're going to add our value. But we're really focused on delivering unmatched client experience and you'll see, we have that trademarked. We actually have a book published on it. All of our advisors are held to those standards. That's part of their performance review every year. Are you delivering that unmatched client experience? And with that, I will turn it over. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just kind of give you a little bit of an overview, kind of taking you back in time. You know, we've been here since 2012 and have seen a lot of things. We've, we've done over 90 reports. We've made over 250 recommendations. And we heard you loud and clear at the last meeting that you want us to continue to, you know, dive deep into some of these areas, which I think tonight you're gonna see that. Here's, here's just some of the, the things that have, we've come out with some of these reports in the past. Some of the revenue enhancements to the city, which, you know, added some value and brought some money in, in per se, some cost savings that we found and that leads us into what we want to do this year, you know, and so what I'm gonna do is let Eddie come up and talk about this year's game plan. And if you like it, then this is what we will kind of, you know, start down the path of doing for the year. Eddie?
Thanks, Dan. Hi, Commissioner. So based off of conversations that we've had over the past few weeks with the commission, I think the general consensus, I'll just say general, is interest in looking at large contracts that the city has with either local municipalities or vendors. So we've decided to identify certain large contracts. We set a scope of $10 million over the past, over a three-year period of which vendors got paid that money to, just to set a list of vendors with potential contract compliance audits. These are the vendors here noted on the slide, Waste Pro, Calvin Giordano and Associates, Facility Contract Services, Operations Management International. Two of those, CGA, the Building Department, we've done an operational audit of that in 2021. We would, we would suggest to do an update on that operational audit as well as a contract compliance, which are two separate kind of internal audits, so to speak. One's an operation, it's a different, it's a different type of audit. We recommend that we update that operational audit as well as doing contract review for these vendors on this slide and next, which is the city of Hollywood, Transportation Authority, as well as the Compass Group, which provides, that Compass Group provides food services to the city's charter schools. We also did a transportation audit, operational audit in 2018. We would also recommend doing an update of that audit to see what the findings were there, if they were resolved, as well as doing contracts compliance. We're recommending all six of these vendors have a contracts compliance review. However, we do, we would stress the importance of, if that wasn't your appetite, that at a minimum, we could do the three vendors, do an update on the operational audit that was issued previously, as well as incorporate our, our new contract compliance audits for those vendors. Also, it doesn't have to be set by a dollar amount. We could also come back to the commission and identify vendors by area such as lobbyists, maintenance, maintenance agreements that the city may have to see if there was any, you know, double counting of the maintenance, like, because there is a lot of maintenance contracts that the city currently has. It, it would be a good idea just to assess all those contracts and see if there's any overlap. Another potential project could be the PACE program. Recently, the Broward Inspector General Office released a memo stating that there may be some potential abuses within this program. They've identified some potential misleading of customers of the overall total cost of these loans. This may affect citizens in the city who've previous, who have loans placed on their properties under this program. Should the commission wish, we could identify, we could try to identify those citizens, review those contracts, review those agreements, review which PACE administrators they went to to get approved and see if there was any misleading of, or hiding of the overall cost of these loans in actuality versus what was presented to them. Also ERP management, it's always a good idea when you implement a new ERP system and give it some runway to fully do an audit. We've identified two areas here. One is the roles and permissions or the segregation of duties. Segregation of duties is just a principle, universal thing that when implemented does prevent fraud, waste and abuse. So we would look at areas surrounding that. Vendor management, your vendor master file in Munis, that houses all vendors in the city. We would take a look at who has access to those vendors, who can make changes to those vendors. Bank accounts are held in that vendor master file as well, if there's been any changes to bank accounts. Again, the purposes of these audits would be, one, how well and effective is this new ERP system going on, as well as preventing any potential fraud, waste or abuse within the city. We'd like to do an update of our NIS security, cybersecurity framework that we did last year. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Florida did pass statutes that align, that require all Florida governmental entities to align their IT processes and procedures to this NIS cybersecurity framework. We, we did that last year. We identified, we identified recommendations and improvements to closely align to that framework with this second project being actually testing the operational controls of, of the city's IT system. The last potential project that we have here for you is bond compliance. This is, should these general obligations pass, it would be a good idea for the city to implement some kind of review and evaluation of the dollars being spent, how it's being allocated, on what these dollars were being spent, just to have a monitoring program in place of review and expenses of, of these funds, should it be approved. And then lastly, our prior year projects, which is code compliance, franchise fee, revenue audit, accounts payable audit and as well as the project management, construction change orders audit. Those last two, I feel, could be kind of folded in to the ERP segregation of duties and the vendor master file, just because a lot of it's overlapping, a lot of it would come out of similar findings within the two. So I would, I would, I would see, I should have you approve it to just fold those into current year project for that work to not duplicate efforts. Now Bill mentioned, sorry, Dan mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, it's a good idea to do an updated risk assessment. I wholeheartedly agree. There's been new changes in internal auditing standards. There's been changes to city governance. There's been changes to city management. There's been changes to the ERP of the city. I think it's time to do an updated, full-depth risk assessment and to talk more about that, I'll hand it over to Christie.
So what is a risk assessment? It's part of the internal audit annual cycle, as you can see and probably are well aware. Today, I want to talk about the benefits of a comprehensive refresh to your risk assessment that is performed. One, as you mentioned, there are a lot of changes. So it's identifying those emerging risks that you may or may not be aware of and making sure that you are in a position to be aware of those and have them mitigated. It also helps us determine where best to deploy your internal audit resources. It informs us for decision-making, but it also adds to transparency and accountability. So our risk assessment approach is really performed in three phases. The first one is gathering the information. That is done through conducting surveys, interviews, citywide. We collect data and documentation to review. We do validation. We, we perform walkthroughs and observations. But the output of that is creating a risk universe, which I will show you an example of that. And that really is your auditable units throughout the city. Everything that's in your, your purview that should be on our radar has your internal auditors. From there, we will assess the risk, you know, based on likelihood and potential impact and rank those and do a risk mapping and categorization. And then we're gonna draft a risk-based audit coverage that we're proposing, audit scopes, timing, et cetera. So this is an audit universe example for municipality that, that we performed. And this shows all your auditable units for that, that city of everything that could be considered for an internal audit on your plan. From there, we would rank those and map those to a risk universe that we would tailor and it would be specific to your city. It's not a one-size-fits-all, so it would be specific to your city. And then from there, we would report out using a heat map on where your highest risks are, both residual risk and inherent risk. Inherent risk is just the risk that exists without any controls and your residual risk is considering the controls that you have in place that we have learned about through our interviews and surveys and assigning a scoring there. So those are the deliverables that you would get from the comprehensive refresh on your risk assessment.
Right. So that, that's pretty much the areas that we were kind of thinking about and presenting to you. If there's something in here that you don't want, that may be a good starting point, you know, and if there's something that we haven't hit on that you do want, that would be good to know too.
Well, I want to thank you for the presentation. I am delighted that you've joined Forvis Mazars. It's a renowned firm, has a sterling reputation and as did yours. And the merger only makes for a, for a better possibility of, of service to the city of Pembroke Pines. I want to thank you for your presentation. I used to be the Auditor General of the New York City School Construction Authority many, many years ago. many, many years ago. And we had a $5 billion program to build new and renovate existing schools. It's one of the jobs that I had during Angelo Castillo, comma, the formative years. And it was a marvelous journey through auditing and performance appraisal. And the importance of a risk analysis is assessment is, it just can't be understated. It is, it is everything about auditing is trying to find out where the potential problems are so that you can focus your attention on where it deserves to be. And, and the need for ongoing risk assessment is always, is always important because an area that might be fine this year is in trouble next year. So that whole cycle of risk assessment, figuring out where to look, it's an ongoing cycle, as you showed in, in your graph. I am eager to see what you come up with in terms of, in terms of where we should be looking when you do your risk assessment. But I want to put one particular thing on your radar because it may, it may come to pass. This city on March 11th is going out for a geo bond issue for $230 million. It is a market basket of, of infrastructure projects that are needed throughout the city, ranging from traffic to parks renovations to affordable workforce housing that, that is needed in the city. There will be some flooding projects that are included. It's a wide range of projects. Almost all of them are infrastructure projects. It would take from thinking beyond the, the expected approval of, of residents of this bond because they love the city and they know it's necessary. It would take several years for, well, at least one year before those projects actually begin spinning, spinning out into the street. This should give you an ample period of time to start thinking about how to audit them. It is incredibly important that the people in the City of Pembroke Pines know that it's not just our eyes, but your eyes and the eyes of others that are going to be on this money to ensure that the high degree of public trust that they have always had in this city is maintained. I don't want to see a nickel of that money, once it's authorized, out of place, not a nickel. I want to make sure that it's looked at. I want to make sure that every transaction that has occurred, is occurred, is, is taking place in accordance with, with the, with the procedures that we have here. And I think that every commissioner here, vice mayor and every commissioner here would agree, we want to make sure that every nickel that the public entrusts to us is, is, is looked at favorably. It was my absolute pleasure back in 11 or 12, I can't remember where it was, to, to be the sponsor of the creation of the Office of Commission Auditor. And I did that because I felt that our city was evolving to the point where we needed a much more structured, but also independent internal audit branch. And since you've joined us, the city has gotten so much better. We've given you special assignments that you've carried out tremendously well, things that might not have even had to do with, with accounting practice, that you've done for us because you're independent. The audit, the audit work that you have done has been terrific, very responsive on the phone whenever we've had questions. However, as things get more complicated and as the city now transitions from a city that was focused exclusively on westward expansion, because that's who we were, to now a maturing city with new urban challenges, now we have a situation where more and more attention to the business side of, of our, of our operation needs to be paid more, closer attention to. And I say this with total and complete, I want to reemphasize this, marrow deep trust in the staff that we have here. We have a tremendously capable executive team, from the city manager on down. This is a city that has never had scandal. This is a city that has always kept its nose clean in terms of how it's done business. It is a very respectable city that operates with the highest degree of, of business security and ethical compliance. However, it's important all the way through that, that these, that these functions be checked and that they be checked independently. And that is your role as, as a charter officer of, of the City of Pembroke Pines, and I want to thank you for that. So I'm looking very forward to the, the risk assessment beginning and that you should come back to us with, with what that plan is. I like the idea that Vice Mayor brought forward, which was to look at our biggest contracts. I think, I think he's right on the money with that. And, and whichever other ones your risk assessment says we should look at. So I want to thank you for your presentation and I'll entertain another discussion. Commissioners?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for a great presentation. Appreciate you resetting and bringing forward to our, to our responses to your prior, right?
Yep.
So we now have Forvis Mazars.
Mazars, yeah.
Mazars.
Yeah.
Mazars. So who is, so our main contacts are still going to be you?
Yeah, and Eddie.
And Eddie.
Well, if you reach out to us, we'll be coordinating with the rest of the team. I mean, we, we've had team members in the past doing work out here which you've never met, but it's not just me and Eddie that, you know, do a lot of the work in this, this engagement. Now, what we're going to do is shift over to some personnel within Forvis that have specific experience in these particular areas.
And, and to that point, then will this commission have access to those experts?
I, I can give you access, yes. As a matter of fact, what I can do is we will give you a list of all team members and how to contact them and you can contact them directly.
So I, the other questions are more towards, well, let me just understand something first in your presentation because you keep making reference to, you know, this is what we kind of propose, but it doesn't have to be, you know, you can change it, this, that and the other. And I'm just trying to get a vibe on, does that mean that what we're seeing tonight is going to come to, let's just say we didn't do anything to any of your recommendations that are on this presentation? Does that mean that we're going to expect to see a document that says this is our work product?
Yep.
That we're going to work on going forward?
Yes. Yeah, if, if there's nothing.
It's important for us to have a little bit of dialogue to give you a little bit of direction tonight so we don't see a document that you think, if we just say, okay, we liked your presentation, I think it's important that we have dialogue, a little bit about some of the projects and things that you have presented here.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for that. So I, to my colleagues, you know, so, you know, when we speak about some of these projects, so I'm going to just be, go to some of the specifics, right? So one of these projects that's been recommended is, is the contract compliance for the City of Hollywood Utilities. So I recognize that it's a large number, but I'm still not capable of wrapping my head around why we would spend resources on this particular contract, primarily because we have just gone through many years and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on experts and testimony on contract compliance, of which the City of Pembroke Pines succeeded in that legal suit. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
You are generally correct. The answer is the matter is currently on appeal to the Fourth District and we intend to submit our briefs by the end of this month. But the case was, was won greatly at the trial level. You are correct. We're a judgment that ranges anywhere between four to $6 million with fees, costs and prejudgment interest.
Right. So I, I think we built a lot of expertise or experience, so I don't know why we would come backwards when we've already gone so far ahead and we've spent an incredible amount of money. Of course, we're going to get probably some recovery of that, but again, that's one I would, I would recommend that we just kind of push that off to the side for the time being. I don't think it's an important matter at this point. I think there's other things that we could probably include in there. The other question I had was that the PACE program, interesting that the Broward County Audit Turr has, has shown that there is abuse, there may be abuse by a PACE administrator. Does that mean that the city, and this may need to go to staff, does that mean the city has PACE administrators or is that being done through the county? Can somebody speak to that, Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Sure, Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager. Mike Stam will be able to provide some details.
Mike Stam is the City Manager. We do not have PACE administrators. The City Commission in 2015 authorized PACE providers to operate within the city. The county also authorized PACE providers to operate within the city. We really have nothing to do with PACE. It's just a tool for homeowners to improve their homes. Some of the things that we hear, though, is that many of the homeowners just still do their due diligence. They don't evaluate the interest rates, maybe they should have done a credit line instead of PACE. Those are some of the things that we hear, but we do not authorize or administer any PACE programs.
Okay. So, and, and I know how important that program is to people who use it, but I also know, Mr. Stam, as you worked with me through a problem where there was a severe breakdown in, in, in a process that burdened actually, you know, one of the applicants for the PACE program unfairly, but fortunately you were able to connect, you know, the, the fix.
The provider, yeah. We connected the provider with the homeowner and got it cleaned up.
But again, it comes back to the PACE administrators are being pretty much then, is that a county, the PACE administrators are to the county? Who are the PACE administrators reporting to?
So the county, the state and the cities individually authorized PACE providers to operate within their communities. It's my understanding that if the city didn't have PACE, hadn't authorized PACE providers, it's my understanding they still could have operated in the county, through the county's authorization. We've been reading a bunch of different things when it comes to this. Really, it started when the state authorized PACE to operate here. If you remember back in 2015, they, when they came and they talked about it, they talked about how it happened in California and it was a great way for people to, you know, improve their homes, hurricane-proof their homes, you know, roofs, this, that and the other. You know, it's, you know, we're really, and if you go to our website on it, we, we just try to encourage people to get multiple quotes, do your due diligence and talk to these folks. I'm not sure how much more the county does on that end, except to authorize them to operate here. I know when we see the tax roll, we can see if there's a PACE loan applied to the home. I know, if I could say this, one of the biggest challenges that we hear from residents is that many of them thought they would be able to transfer their PACE loan if they sold their homes, but many mortgage companies don't want that loan to transfer. They want it cleared before they put a new mortgage on the property. So there's just been some things over time that have changed with PACE, but from a city level.
But I'm just wanting to focus on who authorizes the PACE administrators. I mean, you said something very important. We can, you know, we allow companies to participate in the city.
Correct.
I don't know if the company is the one that's considered the PACE administrator.
That's my understanding.
So, I mean, we find them at fault, then all we do is say, okay, well, we'll take them off the list, but nevertheless, it doesn't do anything for, for that particular company and the administrator that's creating the problem. So my, my thing is that I think that we probably can approach this a little bit differently where maybe we write a resolution, maybe even to the Broward County and asking them to take more action towards, you know, the, the review, the vetting, the qualifying, you know, of these PACE administrators that, you know, all of them. Because just for us to spend money for our city alone, you know, knowing that there might be a larger umbrella who has a deeper pocket, who has better resources to actually address this, I think that's probably a direction that maybe we should go.
Can I interject just?
Sure.
So my understanding is that Broward County has discontinued the PACE program and that, and I'm going to ask.
I didn't know that.
I believe that's the case. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bonilla to certify that, but that's information that I had gotten in, in a conversation that I had with, with an administrator at the county. There are a lot of cities that are walking away from the PACE program. It's become a disappointment. It had had so much promise because of, of the way it was supposed to be financed. So I remember in 2015, I believe it was at a Broward Days, maybe even in 2014, and Mayor Otis and I were both at Broward Days and we heard the presentation of PACE and we were both struck by it because the notion was that these contractors who were PACE-approved, because they were guaranteed quote unquote, a certain degree of volume, would be able to pass along a, a really, really good, capable services at a lower cost. And that people who were credit burdened could use the power of their equity through, through, through their, because PACE's property assessed clean energy, that they would use, pay these amounts over the term of the useful life of the, of the asset using their, their property taxes. And that the, the tax collector would receive this additional amount and they would pay the program and the vendor would be paid and this is, this is how the program would work. So it was using the ability to pay property taxes, a financing tool for this. But very quickly, what we started to see, because the, there wasn't this administration, there wasn't this like Department of PACE that was watching this, nor was there a consumer affairs branch. There was like no one to call. We used to get phone calls from people saying, I have this problem, what, what can you do? There was nothing we could do. It was a private transaction. The only thing that this city commission did was authorize the taxpayers of Pembroke Pines to use the PACE program. That's all we did. We didn't, we didn't create an infrastructure. We never put it forward that we were going to somehow protect you. We, we simply authorized by resolution, I believe it was, or ordinance, that, that, that this would, this would happen. You had a case in your district. I, I'm also aware of a case where, where someone was stiffed through a PACE program and later on, that company went out of business and could not get the satisfaction that they needed to get about a home improvement that they're currently still paying for and, and the home improvement doesn't work. It happens to be solar, solar panels. So I think, I think that we, we should really even look at whether we do this anymore because the program has really fallen into some bad reputation. But I agree with you that if, if the risk analysis shows that this is an area that they need to look at, I think we should.
Well, I, I think we should just not even look at it, just the fact is if the county dropped it and maybe we need to reset and set up, you know, as you spoke, some more formal program to, to utilize. Why, why spend the money to find out that, you know, we got people that are good actors and bad?
So let's do it this way, Mr. Bonilla, if you wouldn't mind, could you call the county and find out what the status is? My understanding is that they discontinued the PACE program in Broward County. And why don't you memo, memo us on your administration's recommendation as to whether we should continue having a program here? Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes. Mayor, it's been 10 years. So Mayor Castillo and I were on the dais. The, the initial, the initial pitch for three companies, Vice Mayor. I, I dug in and I had, I had some concerns about some of the promises. Now, you know, I am in industry, construction industry, and 10 years ago, I was really into that industry. And I would go to people's homes, do four-point inspections, wind mitigations, that sort of thing. And I would warn them about the PACE program, tell them it's available, but as Mr. Stam says, do your due diligence. Now, one of the things that we had done through ordinance was we didn't allow them to solicit door to door. I can't tell you how many times Mrs. Schwartz would bring Mr. Schwartz to the door saying they're here again over the last 10 years consistently and every, and Mr. Stam knows when it happens, I light his phone up and because I usually get a card from them to go, look, they're doing it again. So it, it's been rampant. The other thing is the, is the snow job about insurance credits for new roofs and impact glass, which we know that people are struggling today. And then when you have contractors say, well, if you do this, you'll get a discount and all it is, is the same discount. There's no additional. and all it is is the same discount. There's no additional, other than a tax bill, at 30 points, basis points above what they could have done somewhere else. So to Mr. O'Keefe's point, or Mr. Castillo's point, where the city, where the city would usually get in the middle is going out and do the building permit process, the sign-off, and then there is a latent defect or patent defect of product, and then they say, "Well, the city signed off on it." So if it's the will of the commission to remove the PACE program, that's the will of the commission. However, if there's a way, Mr. Stam, for us to identify any property that has PACE on the tax roll now, we know, we can give the county that information. I'm sure they can pull the same information anyway. But we can certainly survey them and find out if there's been fraud. Now, just my luck, Vice Mayor, I befriended somebody who worked as one of these PACE auditors, and he got snowed as well. Because what happened was, is there would be a roofing company who would now hire subs, and the subs would hire subs, and next thing you know, you've got someone swinging a hammer who's not even licensed, working under the original one, aiding and abetting. So as the past chairman of the County Central Examining Board, we used to hammer people like that. And that's 10 years ago, how I was pushing the folks trying to get our support to go allow our residents to see this option. But as the mayor recalls, 10 years ago, we were just kind of breaking out of the recession. People didn't really have the credit. Lenders weren't giving the Home Depot card credit. So people were literally trapped. They have a roof that's leaking, they have an AC that's busted, they were stuck. So we took the steps of allowing this program to proceed in the hopes that people weren't going to get snowed. Unfortunately, because as the mayor articulately said, the state of Florida let this thing out without any controls around it. Who's going to get hurt? The consumer. And so the program, the concept of the program is a benefit. But just like the MySafeFlorida Home Program that's being spun for the third time, 3.0, my company was a part of the first round, one of two in Broward County. Okay, I walked away when I saw the snow job happening. So I would say, if we're going to undo the PACE, I think we need to just take a step back and see how many folks are going to be impacted by it, see what legislatively can be changed. Let's talk to the state attorney's office and see who can be prosecuted. Because there is an added benefit of extending a payment. And they can pay these things off at any point. Some people choose to pay it over 30 years. And that costs a lot of money when you do that. However, what concerns me now, first time I'm hearing this, Mr. Stam, is that the mortgage companies are forcing sellers to settle at the closing table, and that wasn't a part of the deal. So if they're forcing people to do it, they may be breaking the law by forcing people to do it. So maybe that's something we can assist the county and those who are responsible for it. But I'm all in favor of having performance metrics and cost controls and holding folks accountable, certainly. And I want to thank the Commissioner and Auditor for bringing this to light so we can have the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner, and...
Mr. Mayor, may I finish?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you. So I just want to, okay, so we had a lot of discussion on PACE. I'm sorry, I didn't intend for that to be that way. But it's not unanimous, at least not with me, and you heard enough. You know, for you to bring a project back to, you know, assign a dollar value to, I think it's a little thought. Needs to be into that. And probably the last thing I have to say is just in terms of adding a project. You know, because one of the things that I have constant complaints about is our billing system. You know, I mean, we transitioned, you know, to an ERP, and, you know, we're trying to do enterprise-wide and tying everything together. But man, it seems like just in that process, there's a lot of, still a lot of work that might need to be done. But, and then what happens, it comes out, you know, to a resident or to, you know, another customer of ours of the city that, you know, is constantly complaining about the bills being, not little, sometimes like really a lot out of whack, and then trying to get restitution to that sometimes is highly frustrating to the people involved. And guess who gets to feel that heat? So I think that billing is probably something that should also be a project that's included on this.
I agree.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in this last slide, Eddie was talking about putting the accounts payable audit, some of this stuff, building it back into the ERP project, which would make sense. And I think that should probably cover what you're talking about. We'll just collapse that in.
We just want people to feel comfortable.
Oh, yeah.
I believe...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And to Commissioner's good point, it's actually part of, we did a utility billing audit, operational audit, back in 2018. We've recommended as part of the contract's compliance to update that operational internal audit that we did then to do new procedures on that, on top of the contract compliance with Jacobs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very, very excited to see the work that you're doing, because you know I'll be watching.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you guys for the great presentation and for reaching out, I assume individually, to the commissioners and the mayor so that this felt a little bit more comprehensive of what we had all mentioned. To Vice Mayor Good's point, the billing system, I do really hope that we can look into. So point for the billing system times two on that one, because it is something that we get the residents complaining to us about quite often. One of the things that administration also knows I harp a lot on is our transportation. I pulled the bus transportation audit that you guys had done in December 2017 slash 2018, and it's something, an area that I really would like the city to move into being a little bit more progressive, more futuristic, as we're developing into, obviously, a large suburban city. And it's something that we've talked about on the dais previously, and I've personally talked to administration about. We've delved deep into what could be better, what we're working on, what that contract looks like, because it is a pretty large contract that you guys highlighted here. And I want to make sure that we're looking at all the possibilities within transportation. Look also at what the county is doing regarding transportation. Make sure that we are really aligning with their projections and what they're working on to make sure we have that mobility for our residents, whether they have or not, they don't have a car. So that's definitely an area of importance to myself, and I hope we can all come in on that because it's something that, as we grow, we really do need to kind of keep up with the times in terms of transportation, and it's a pretty large bill that we end up paying for our residents. And I want to make sure that we're serving them and that they're getting the best service possible, as well as we're not spending as much money, because it is a subsidized expense for the buses, for the bus system, as well as one that takes into consideration a lot of other intergovernmental agencies as well. So for me, it's that one. And then I didn't see it on here, but I had mentioned it, and to see what the rest of the will of the commission might be. But to audit as well, whether it's the contract compliance or an audit, not sure which one would be more appropriate for our lobbying firms. I mentioned that in the last presentation, simply because I don't think it'd be an extensive thing. They're rather small contracts in comparison to these. But I do want to make sure that we are looking into that, because it does affect how much we get done for the city, especially with this, at this point, not new, but the administration that we have at the state level, and looking into the federal level, making sure that we have the appropriate measures ready to get what we want and get the federal and state dollars that we put out there within Pembroke Pines and Broward County, that they come back to us when possible. So that would be a recommendation of mine. And then I think the other ones, other than the ones that Vice Mayor Good knocked off on consideration, would be really useful to look into. I look forward to hearing what else everybody has to come in on. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I wanted to thank you all for reaching out. I, to echo what the Vice Mayor said, I believe it was in December, I'm happy that we have a much more comprehensive presentation than we did back then. Couple of points that I did want to bring up, I'm not going to talk about PACE. I think we talked about that, and I'm not an expert on it. But looking forward to whatever you all report. I wouldn't vote on any action until I see what the memo is from Mr. Bonilla, Mr. Dodge, and their team. Billing, again, there's nothing nefarious by the city or contractors, but over this weekend, I know I'm not the only one that received messages from constituents on the billing cycle for water in particular. And our director was very, very responsive and is trying to remedy it. But I'm very concerned, because oftentimes, the cycles, I guess... Jonathan, I'm sorry if I misstate it administratively, the billing cycles are 30 days, but oftentimes, I think we had a 36 or 39-day billing cycle recently.
Mine was 40.
I was 36. My father-in-law was 39. Some others were different days. I just, I'd like to not have that again, and you all are the experts, so I'd appreciate your help with that. Again, I think the city is very well-run. There's absolutely nothing nefarious. But I was very troubled with a payroll issue that happened when there was apparently some kind of switch with the system. And it was, I think we went to a new program. It impacted, I know it impacted some police officers, I think several. Again, I don't believe there was anything, any, it was a software issue, from what I'm understanding. HR is working with the individual officers, but I'd really like not to see that happen again, especially if we're going to transition between softwares, whether it's a police officer, firefighter, or somebody else, having issues with payroll and having to pay back over a certain amount. It impacts families, it impacts everyone. So I'd just like to really tighten up on that. Finally, for a rookie commissioner like myself, average, I'm not going to hold you to it, but the average of your cycle, which is not on the screen anymore, but it's in here, identifying what you want to take a closer look at, to completion, ballpark figure. How long is the length?
Well, this...
I think she wants to answer, by the way. She's moving.
Oh, yeah, yeah, please.
She's moving. Either one, I don't care, but...
So we would, it would, a lot of it depends on when everyone can be available. So we would like to condense, like, those interviews and surveys in as short a time as possible. And once we conduct those and analyze the risk, you're looking at, depending on if we can get all the interviews scheduled, like, a three-week to four-week period.
Okay. So about the PACE program, I'm just kidding. I'm done.
Yeah, now that's for the risk assessment, right? Yeah, because the contract audits are going to be a little bit different. You know, that's, you know, what we have to do with the contract is we've got to get into the contracts, and then we've got to develop an actual audit program, and then go in and start testing those contracts. And then, of course, we're probably, might have to lean on the city attorney a little bit to get information out of the vendors if we need it. So just so you know.
Mayor, I have a thought, something that we haven't looked at. So we have vendors who perform services for us. And then let's say the work quality isn't up to the spec, and then they go out and they redo the job. We need to find out if we're paying them twice. So where would that fall in, Mr. O'Keefe? For a job that was assigned, and I'm going to just say it, let's say Public Works to redo the carpet here, we're not going to bid that out, we're going to have Labor do that for us, and it just didn't turn out right, so they have to do it again. I believe that there's an opportunity for us to review to make sure that we're not getting billed. Now, most of our vendors will step up and say, "You know what? We messed up. We're going to eat this one." But there's a cost to that. We need to identify that cost. It's one thing having the vendor saying, "Yes, I'll take one on the chin." It's another thing actually putting in a column to go, "Look, this is our performance", because every so often, we have to review these folks for renewals. So it'd be nice to see where we are from a performance metric standpoint, as well as the financial.
Okay.
With that, I would just add, part of our procedures are around vendor payment analytics. And so we would use our data tools to identify where there may be trends that look odd or where there may be duplicate payments, based on dates, or we see identical amounts, et cetera. On top of that, we're going to look at operational processes around it. So how are you tracking change orders? How are those getting communicated to make sure you're not paying a second time? But usually around those types of projects, we will use our data tools to look at an entire population that we will trend over multiple years to identify anomalies, not just by payment type, but by vendor as well.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Great presentation. We look forward to seeing you. Oh, I'm sorry?
Sorry, it's just something I meant to mention a little bit earlier. I see on here the information technology, because technology moves so quickly with AI now in the picture, all of that. I think that this would be a good opportunity to, maybe not even this year, as we see, like, things evolve, but we are getting, in our agendas, a lot of things regarding IT, software renewals, servers. Even in this agenda, there was a lot of that, and so that might be an area of interest as well, just because of the constant changes regarding that department that we look into. And then to that end, when we come back, when you guys reassess what these projects might be, will we also get a breakdown of the estimated cost to look into each of the audits? I think that would help us at least prioritize and have a menu option of things that we are willing to take, and maybe some things that we can put a little bit further down the line, not necessarily at top priority right now.
So on the list that we gave you, on the contract compliance, we're going to drop the City of Hollywood utilities. Focus on the rest of them. And we'll also put something in there for lobbyist contracts, okay?
Would be my preference, yeah.
Okay, and we're not going to do PACE, and we're going to focus on some of the billing aspects of ERP. And then, of course, Christie is going to be doing a deep dive into risk assessment, and that might generate some other areas to be able to look at as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so very, very much for a great presentation. Thank you, Commissioners, for a great discussion, and we'll be seeing you soon. Thank you so very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is appeals to the Board of Adjustment Decisions.
None, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Announcement of board and committee appointments. Commissioner Hernandez?
I'll, I'm sorry that we had some business to go through, Mr. Rodriguez, but I'm pleased to appoint George Rodriguez, who is a resident, there's so many Chapel Trail residents, but you're out in Pasadena, so I wanted to thank you. Him and his wife also, who was appointed to a different board, were very, very, very enthusiastic about serving their new city, where they have moved to. They have two children. I think you're being videoed by one right now. Can you come up here, take a photo for your dad up here, if you can? George is a lead product compliance engineer, lives in District Four. I leave for my colleagues if they're looking at the, if they're looking at his skill set. I think it's the kind of skill set that we want, looking at numbers in our Citizens Budget Advisory Committee that was reestablished, or established, I should say, by this commission. George, anything you want to say?
No, I want to thank the board for the trust. My experience as an engineer, my background is chemical engineering for the last 12 years, and I've worked in different type of industries, usually Fortune 500. So I do have a lot of experience in budgeting, in program management, project management, so I'll be able to help. I grew up in Broward, I grew up in Coral Springs, and then we lived in Sunrise, and in 2023 moved here to Pembroke Pines, and love this city.
And I thank you very much for your service. Do you want to take a photo with your son? And I'll take it from up here.
Why don't you go with him, Commissioner, I'll take the pho-
Oh, are you good at this, or?
Yeah, I'm pretty good.
Maria can do it better than me.
She can do it better than me, but. You know, George, you're, you're actually a really special person right now, because now you officially make a quorum for this board, so I hope, uh, Clerk, that we can, we can set a meeting as soon as possible, so they can get their work started. We now have six.
Noted. Madam Clerk, has, has everyone, uh, has every commissioner appointed all of their, um, budget?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I know, I know that everyone is working hard to, uh, to do that, and my picks will happen once all of yours is done, and, uh, I've been asked several times why, why that is. Well, when you're mayor, you, um, have to look at, um, not just the people who want to, uh, uh, apply for your positions, but also the folder that the clerk keeps of, of individuals who, through a very difficult process, were not chosen, and so I want to make sure that everyone, uh, appoints, and then I will very quickly appoint, uh, uh, my members. So, take your time, it's, uh, hurry up, but take your time.
In the meantime, we do have a quorum, and they need to meet.
Yeah, I know.
We, we agreed in December that we would have them ready for January.
Yes, I, I, I understand that, Commissioner, it didn't work out. So, uh, we will be patient, and we will be respectful, and we will allow, uh, uh, our members to go through their processes, and once that's done, uh, we will get going, and that's sometimes the way it works. By the way, uh, have you, have you been holding, um, 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 the Positive Children, uh, seminars? We, we assigned that to you in May, have you been holding any of those?
That's something that Mr. Casalanos and I are, there, there was a, we were looking at dates, we were looking at format, and I'm just waiting to hear back from his internal, uh, how he wants to proceed, so, yes.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have an update for you, I'll tell you what, uh, he's here tonight, we'll have an update for you at the next meeting.
Okay, great, because, uh, uh, we, we gave you that assignment in May, and, and I haven't seen any Raising Positive Children, uh-
Well, we were expecting, yeah, we were expecting October, but then there was a, there was a discussion, uh, of a change of type of format.
Wow, uh-huh.
So we'll bring it, I'll, I'll tell you what, we'll, Mr. Casalanos and I will make a presentation at, at the next meeting.
That's, that's good, because I know, I know the parents, uh, uh, are very interested in that, so we should all focus on, uh, on, uh, the things that we have to do, thank you very much. Okay, the, um, next item is, uh, the, uh, Commissioner Hernandez. No, Commissioner Good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, call Dr. Scott Lewis up to the podium. Dr. Scott, that's his first name, he goes by a very personable way, uh, he is a twenty-seven year resident of Pembroke Pines, actually just across the street around the road here.
Look at that.
He's an avid bicyclist, the, uh, he, he, he didn't come today because he didn't want his helmet to mess his hair up, we talked about that earlier. But, uh, I will say that, uh, he, I am appointing him to the, um, to the Environmental Board, I am extremely excited to do that, I, I've had some extensive conversation with Dr. Scott. You'll see in his application, he has a, has an incredible, um, background in education, uh, he has performed a lot of wonderful things for a lot of the local communities here, uh, and, and, and most anything green, whether it grows or whether it's, uh, you know, used in, uh, in a way to make this environment better, and hence, uh, the, probably the most important thing is, is that, you know, Dr. Scott has indicated to me, you know, he still has a passion to, to contribute, to, uh, share what he knows and to, and to participate, and he wants to help make this city a better place, knowing that it's a great place, but he, he wants to make it even better. So I want to thank you, Dr. Scott, for agreeing to be a, uh, a member of the, uh, Environmental Board, and, uh, we welcome you, and so, sir, if you have a few words to say?
Sure.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Good, I appreciate those words, um, and, uh, I'd like to echo those, I, I do, uh, appreciate the opportunity to help, uh, work on environmental issues in Pembroke Pines, I, I do a lot of work in the community in South Florida on climate change issues, but it's, uh, of course, I live in Pembroke Pines, and I'd love to work on some environmental issues here, so I appreciate that opportunity, so I look forward to it, thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
So I have a really exciting board appointment for our, our environmental advisory board of Ms. Claudia Bonilla. She is a bright young mind here in Pembroke Pines, um, grew up here in Pembroke Pines, attended our charter school system, has a background in public health, which I think does, uh, bode really well with our environmental advisory board, because it gives a different perspective, um, as to how our environment really does impact, um, our public health, as well as a really, uh, we had a chat about what this environmental advisory board can do and how we can communicate what they are doing to our public, so making sure we're putting that piece of communication, and so that our, our residents are aware that there is work being done for our environment here in Pembroke Pines. So thank you so much for your application and for your dedication to the city.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm just really excited and very honored to, um, have been appointed, um, I'm born and raised in Pembroke Pines, as well as a Pines Charter alumna. Mr. Chance was actually my principal at East Campus, so it's really great to see familiar faces, but, um, I'm really excited to be able to give back to my community, I do a lot for Miami-Dade County, because I go to University of Miami, but I told myself, um, if I'm not doing something for my own community, what am I doing? So I'm really excited to be here, thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Today's consent agenda consists of items one through sixteen, what is your pleasure? No polls? No polls? Any from the public? Seeing none, can I have a motion for items one through sixteen?
Motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, that ends the, uh, that motion is adopted unanimously, quays by judicial consent, ordinance on second resolution, second, first resolutions has been pulled, regular agenda, uh, reports of the League, representative and MPO Metropolitan Organization, League first. Reports of the League.
Nothing on my end.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything, Commissioner Schwartz?
Nothing to report.
Anything, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We, um, did not have a MPO meeting, uh, this, this past month, which was, uh, unusual, but a great break for many of us, uh, but I will say, though, that the, uh, the MPO is, uh, putting out what they call the Broward Safety Action Plan. It is a, it is a, a project that the MPO does, where they identify some of the most dangerous, uh, traffic areas, you know, primarily around the intersections, and what they're actually doing is, is that they go out and they do sort of a, a, a public, uh, engagement to talk about, you know, how can you improve, um, you know, what they think should be done actually to improve things, and I know that the MPO has done that before and passed with us here, because I walked with them on the intersection of University and Pines Boulevard, which is certainly a high-traffic and high-hazard intersection, and so, uh, the goal is to identify different, um, strategies that would, uh, enhance the safety of, of, uh, different modes of, uh, transportation. The, uh, the, the meetings that they're having, they have, uh, approximately just around eight or nine meetings, uh, throughout the county, uh, at different, uh, locations, like, for instance, they have, like, Taft Street from Northwest Seventieth Terrace to 441, if you've ever gone down Taft Street, on the other side of 441, you know that's a, a very old, uh, district, commercial district, and, uh, all asphalt to asphalt, right? Uh, but there's several other locations throughout, none of them are really very local to us, um, and, but if anybody's interested in attending these meetings that happen to work in the area or frequent the area, I can ask, I can ask the, uh, the clerk to have this, uh, list put on the, uh, on the website, so people can have access, uh, to those meeting places and the meeting times, but that's the, uh, the MPO, uh, report for me tonight. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Sorry, add to that, I don't, I'm sure you're aware, but they are doing an MPO university, for those of us who would like to understand a little bit more about, uh, what MPO does, I don't want to be anywhere close to the MPO, because I know it's a lot of work, but I do want to, uh, understand a little bit more, and, um, I have that information if anybody else is interested in attending as well.
Yes, if you could, if you could share it, thank you. Okay, anything else, uh, that? City manager?
No reports.
City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, a couple of quick items, if I may. Today, I privately provided to you with a, an exempt document to give you the, uh, insight and status of the pending cases the city is handling with regard to memorial, uh, healthcare systems. We expect, uh, based upon my communications with you today by email, uh, to bring back to the city commission at the second meeting in February, settlement documents with regard to both the HCA and the Baptist Health Matters, that were part of the litigation with the City of Pembroke Pines, going back in some instances back eighteen months.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, there was a question, Commissioner.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, City Attorney, if you could bring my colleagues up to speed on, uh, email I had with you and the clerk and the manager this morning?
That's my next item.
Okay.
Yep, um, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, um, I'd be happy to, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The, the litigation, again, I've given you some insight to where we are on the status of things, and I appreciate the mayor's, uh, particular involvement and, and assessment of the matters that, uh, we'll bring back to the commission at the, uh, next meeting for resolution. The second issue is Commissioner Schwartz inquired of me, and I followed up with our city clerk regarding polling places for the March eleventh election. The clerk is prepared to respond to your questions as, as need be, um, in the context of the selection, uh, locating and, uh, contracting for sites, if the mayor would choose to allow that to occur, she can respond to the commission.
Yeah, so, so basically, um-
What, what, what was the question?
In context, Flanagan reached out to me today, uh, because they received a letter from the clerk with respect to the, um, election on the eleventh. Traditionally, uh, schools get guidance from district, because it's held generally county-wide, but this is a special election in which our clerk now fills the role of the SOE, so I wanted to make sure that we were, uh, coordinating these efforts with district, so that we don't have any hiccups, uh, as we lead up to, I, I think we have ten or twelve schools within the city that are polling places, so I want to be able to give them a, a, as much notice as possible, and so that we don't have any kind of a hiccup as we did, I think it was in March, uh, we had a school that opened late, so, uh, we certainly don't want to have that happen.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that hiccup had anything to do with the, the city clerk or what, or what it had to do with, Madam Clerk, are you having any difficulty scheduling, uh, with the schools?
Uh, Mayor, we, um, have received all of the agreements from the school, except for Flanagan.
Right.
And based on the email I saw today, I, um, I am in constant contact with the, uh, supervisor of elections, and they're well-aware, and didn't show any concern to me about that particular facility, because it is a Broward County school. And I have also reached out to the coordinator of, uh, Governmental Affairs Office, who handles these items, and so we're just waiting, we have four more that we're pending, and one school.
I, I want to, I want to thank the clerk for her efforts this morning, when the AP from Flanagan reached out to me, I sent it eight o'clock this morning, uh, and my email said, let's just check on everybody, because I want to make it an isolated type of thing, but I'm glad to hear that we only have four to go, so, thank you for your work today.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing further from my report, but thank you for listening.
Anything else?
New business.
New business?
Just a quick comment, um, I would like us to look into the possibility of doing employee recognition here, uh, appreciation here at city commission meetings, it's something that I used to see at the county, whether it's celebrating someone's fifth year, ten year, fifteen, twenty-year anniversary with the city, as well as either Employee of the Year, Employee of the Quarter, I know that was a poss, um, a program that happened in the past, and I would really like for us to show the appreciation to our staff, not just kind of telling them, but really showing them that they are appreciated by the commission as a whole, and bringing them in to, you know, interact a little bit more in-depth with, um, our staff members.
So, as I recall, they did five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and then any other?
We could get to thirty or forty here at this point, yeah.
Mr. Bonilla, is that something that you can please talk to Mr. Dodge about? I think it's a lovely idea.
It's a great idea, it's something that we will support and, and, and have staff work on this.
Yeah, if we can get a, a lineup of maybe what you guys had done in the past, and, you know, get some ideas going, so that we can take care of really appreciating you guys here, you know, in front of the public, because I think the public really does need to know that we're not just the only ones that make things happen here, it's all of our staff, and, including our police and fire department, and, and all of our departments that really do so much work for us.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, this, uh, uh, Mr. Welch and Mr. Bailey, if you would stay for a second. That said, this meeting is adjourned.